Good evening. Calling to order the April 6th meeting of the Newton School Committee. Hello to everyone in the school committee chamber and to everyone joining us from home. This is the second of our special school committee meetings on the FY24 budget. We had elementary and secondary presentations on Monday during our last meeting. And we had a lengthy discussion exploring how to increase funding available to our schools in order to avoid reductions to staff and programming due to the failed operating override, which was voted down by Newton residents. Monday's discussion reflects much of the angst that our committee and our community feels over the reductions that we have to make in order because of the failed override. And the impact of these reductions, and we've had a creative, though unorthodox, proposed funding strategy. That this proposal came as a surprise to many of our members is an understatement. And I use the term, here I'm going to say it came as a surprise to our team. Because this committee is in fact a team. And as a team, we observe certain operational norms. We don't surprise our staff and we don't surprise each other. Open meeting law does dictate that our conversations must happen here in our public meetings. But we have multiple opportunities to hear thoughtful suggestions regarding our budget over the many months that we have been talking about the impact of the override, including a budget workshop. This is meant as a reminder to any member that if you want to initiate a conversation among the committee, we need only ask that it be properly noticed. Anyway, we will work together to schedule a follow-up discussion in one of our upcoming meetings, and we look forward to hearing the details of the proposal on the table before us. For tonight, our budget review will focus on teaching and learning and student services. And once again, we will not have public comment during this special meeting. So with that, we will jump to a quick update from interim superintendent Kathy Smith.
Thank you, Tamika. Good evening to everybody. And I also want to wish everybody a wonderful Passover. I know the past two nights, there are many families that are celebrating with their families. I also want to, the update will be a little bit different this evening. I'm actually going to, first of all, I'm going to go right to the PowerPoint, and I said that there are a couple of slides I'm just going to review quickly before we go into our presentation this evening. I also want to thank so many members of our school community. I know you have taken time. I know you're watching this budget process. Many of you have been with us since the fall, when we were out there talking about our three override questions, the one that obviously we're concerned with at this point was the operating override, the $4.5 million. But that being said, I know that you're following the process, you're sending emails, you're talking about your many concerns. I'm reading each and every one of them. And I am trying to at least let you know that I have received that. So I do want to thank everybody that is sharing concerns that they have, as we have concerns also. So I'd like to go right to the slides. So again, many of you have seen this tonight, we are going to have teaching and learning and student services. So the goal will be, excuse me, let me go back to the agenda. The agenda is looking at the FY24 budget goal, a review of our drivers very quickly, an overview of budget highlights, and then you will have two presentations with Dr. Renee McCall for teaching and learning and Casey Noel Miller for our student services. Next slide. So this slide you have seen, this is our budget goal, and we talked about at the beginning, maintaining our current level of services that we provide to the students in the Newton Public Schools, and we understood clearly, building a sustainable budget over time. And we are working, putting many, many efforts into looking at every department, every piece of the budget. And I know when you look at a large budget, $271-plus million, it seems like we should just easily find this money. And it isn't such that there are things that we have in the budget that must remain to run a school district. And I want you to know the hours and hours that have gone into some of the decisions that you will hear this evening. We are unable to maintain that current level of services for this FY24 budget year. In fact, we're looking at about a $4.9 million deficit. That is down from, if you heard our presentations going back to January, that is what we have it down to, and that's been a lot of people coming together and looking at every possible way that we can find funding. And I'm not talking one-time funding, I'm talking fundy, funding in our budget and to be sustainable over time. Next slide, please. And the budget drivers. So we talk about the growing student needs. We talked about coming out of the pandemic. In fact, I always say that we are not out of the pandemic, we're doing a really great job this year. And I enjoy when I can being out in the school buildings, looking at the students, looking at the supports, looking at our teachers, looking at all of our staff coming together to support whatever the needs are of our students. Next slide, please. So rising costs and expenses. We've talked about inflation impacting our supplies, our materials, our resources, our textbooks, our software. We talk about transportation going up, we talk about our utilities, our health insurance. Next slide, please. And again, the use of one-time funds. And although we talk about how thankful we were, not only in the Newton Public Schools throughout our Commonwealth and throughout this country, to be able to have federal support dollars, state support dollars, dollars that came from our city, ESAR funding, ARPA funding, CARES Act funding. So we've come a long way in those three years. And really, I know it doesn't feel like that this evening, but people should really pat themselves on the back. People have done yeoman's work to be able to open our doors and to look at our students this year. And I talk about it as far as parents coming into the building and celebrations and music being performed, fine arts and athletic events and conferences. You know, it feels like we are certainly getting back to our pre-pandemic days. And it, again, thank you to everybody with this use of one-time funding, but that funding is going away, and this is what we talk about a sustainable budget. And the last, of course, is the failed operational override. I often talk about if you had a level services budget, and what I mean is opening the doors this September, exactly where you were the previous September, it would have been almost a 7% increase over our budget from last year. So that would have been $280 million. If we had had that operating override, the increase would have been 5.2% for this year, with that infused into our operating budget. We are, at this point, at 3.73%. Hence, we are dealing with the deficit that we'll be addressing tonight in these two areas. And again, if you look at the slide, it really explains it all. Our allocation last year, our one-time fundings and our carry-forward fundings, $266 million. When you look at our allocation this year, it is $10 million over the increase that we had last year. That's the 3.73% increase from the city with our funding. We are able to carry forward $2 million again. I say this often, it's not that you're not trying to be good stewards of the tax dollars, but when we have a budget, it is for that budget year. And usually, we're watching very carefully, we're watching, did we have an easy winter? Are heating costs going to go down, snow removal, all of those type of things? But this year was freezing our budget in January and making sure, knowing that we did not know the outcome, and we certainly understood that there clearly would be a structural deficit there. So we are rolling over $2 million. The circuit breaker bridge credit, you've heard me talking about this, the 14% increase in the OSD rate since really September. So I'm very thankful, Mayor, for the city coming forward and really giving us, we call it a bridge credit from the city at this point. And I want people to understand, we are still out there, we have obligations to meet with our state representative, senator, and coming together. And I know the governor's budget is trying to address this, we're looking to tweak it a little bit. So we will continue to do that, and we will keep everybody certainly updated. So simply do the math, and right now, our reduction's necessary to prepare a balanced budget, which is what we need to do at this point, is a $4.9 million deficit. Next slide. And what does our FY24 budget support? And it supports well-rounded curriculum, extracurricular programs, counseling and therapeutic supports. And I said I wouldn't read everything this evening, but the thing I wanted people to understand is when we took a critical look across every department, across every program, we looked at, and there were times we did have to reduce. But we tried to keep the bones of a program, you know, making sure that we were able to not eliminate something without careful thought. Now, again, you have heard me, and I have had many emails about the understanding of differences. And again, I continue to say that it is a program that is certainly part of the Newton Public Schools for 45 years. I understand that, respect it, appreciate it. I've talked to Dr. Nolan, and we are going to be partners. So we are going to look critically at some of the curriculum, the pedagogy, some of the things that we've had concern about. I'm actually pleased, and I was invited by Rebecca Lubens to get out and to see a number of the programs actually being implemented in the schools. So I have picked at least two, maybe three. I would like to go out there, and I just want to assure everybody that we will have conversation, we will have a partnership, I keep using the word task force, I will not be here. And as I said, I am transitioning with Dr. Nolan, and we will continue to talk about ways to move forward. So again, I wanted you to see this slide because I added this, and I will then hand it over very quickly. But we talked about this back, I want to say, on late February into early March. And this is when we looked across the board at every department, looking at what we thought was about a $6 million budget deficit, if you remember at the time. And we looked at, again, every department, and this is where we have ended up right now. So you look at, you had elementary education and secondary presented the other evening, a $1.2-plus million reduction secondary, and you saw at the middle school, a lot of that had to do with enrollment, that's a $1.5 million reduction. Student services, that you will see tonight. When we looked at it originally, it was over $2.1 million. So that is down now to $1.1 million. Casey will present. Teaching and learning, it's interesting, it's a smaller part of our budget, but I think we all know the big arms that teaching and learning has with the support for our curriculum, for really what's happening in our classrooms, works very closely with both elementary and secondary education. And teaching and learning, excuse me, IT and library, that is on the plus side. And Stephen Retendi will be here. And again, this was bringing some of the funding into our operating budget, which we knew we had to do this year. So there is an increase there, but there's also a reduction. Facilities are reduced, system-wide expenses and benefits, and we also have fee increases. So if you, if you look at that, with the fee increases that we're proposing, it is probably a $4.3 million reduction in our present programs. And without further ado, I would like to invite Dr. Renee McCall, and I know she is coming up with her team, and I will let her introduce. And these are actually team members that have come before us this year, I think, on a number of occasions. So welcome back, ladies.
So while everyone's getting settled, I just want to acknowledge, we breezed over our consent agenda, we'll do that following the presentation.
So sorry.
We were very excited, it's okay. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to introduce my team. I have Allison Levitt, who's the Director of English Language Learners. I have Jen Shore, who is the Director of Special Initiatives and Math Coordinator. And I also have Joel Peterson, who is the Middle School English Language Arts Coordinator. So before detailing the budget impact on teaching and learning, I'd like to first start off by outlining the components of our work. This visual here outlines the different aspects of our department, beginning with the K-3 coordinators. They play an integral role in shaping rich and engaging learning experiences across the district. Our team consists of 13 content experts, responsible for ensuring that the curriculum as well as instruction are aligned, coherent, and culturally responsive. This is done by systematically reviewing, revising, and updating materials and practices across the district. Our coordinators are highly skilled, and they are the conduit between educational research as well as classroom practice. We are charged with ensuring that curriculum and instruction, again, is highly effective, and that's implemented through professional development. And through that, we want to ensure that we're building teacher content knowledge and capacity, as well as sharpening instructional practice to promote engaging, affirming, and meaningful instruction. We also guide the Department of New Educators, I'm sorry, the development of new educators through the New Educators Induction and Mentoring Program. And we pair new teachers with mentors to provide coaching and professional development support. And then finally, we collaborate with the Special Education Department, as well as Department of ELLs, and the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to ensure calibration of excellence and equitable instruction across classrooms. On this next slide, we are going to outline the three major shifts or changes impacting teaching and learning this year, beginning with the restoration of coordinators to full capacity. With larger class sizes, teachers will undoubtedly have a heightened need for additional levels of support. Coordinators will be able to fill that gap by providing timely guidance on strategies that address student concerns by building their capacity to meet the needs of those students through data analysis. And as the budget guidelines lift up the importance of improving the educational experience of all learners as a priority, coordinators, their ability to provide ongoing professional development will promote high-quality instruction to meet that need. Our section, our second major shift is a reduction in subscriptions and instructional software. We would not have eliminated these resources under normal circumstances, however, with a near $5 million deficit, we had to do so. Particularly contracts with Newsela and Brain Pop, which have a combined cost of approximately $100,000, will be eliminated next year. Newsela is a resource that provides access to articles related to current events, and those articles can be adjusted based on a student's reading level. There is, however, a freemium option, so a free premium option for teachers, where they'll still be able to assign articles and assessments through Newsela, however, the number of articles will be significantly reduced. It will be about four per week, and right now, there is access to over, I believe, 10,000 or so articles. And then Brain Pop. Brain Pop is a resource that provides short, highly engaging video resources to students to supplement various concepts covered in various, sorry, in different content areas. There is a free version, however, it's not very extensive, and so this is an area where our coordinators will work really hard to think about how we might be able to supplement resources in that way. And then our final shift in the Teaching and Learning Department is around the instructional delivery model for English Language Learners in order to provide essential, high-quality programming for multilingual learners that Allison will cover in a few slides. The next slide illustrates our department, three key levers. So you might remember from the first slide, we talked about curriculum, then instruction, and then professional development. So these three levers are really important to our work. In terms of curriculum, we want to draw your attention to equitable and coherent curricula to ensure that there are consistent learning experiences across the district. In terms of instruction, we are planning to guide educators to effectively implement content knowledge to ensure, again, that it is grounded in reach, research, and is culturally responsive. And then finally, creating conditions for collaboration and learning within and across school levels, I'm sorry, across schools through a comprehensive arc of professional learning. And then our next slide outlines some of the key department priorities for next year. We have several content areas, but we tried to condense this down to just one slide. This does not capture the full essence of our work, but it does capture some elements. So we wanted to, again, draw your attention to the three levers of curriculum, instruction, and then professional development. So some of the things we'd be working on is ensuring that our curriculum is updated, it is aligned to be culturally responsive, that we are constantly refreshing our libraries' bookrooms, and replenishing inoperable instruments. And then down below with professional development, ensuring, again, that they're aligned to the current frameworks, and that, again, we are focusing on data collection and then understanding how to effectively use that data to inform instructional practice. And now I'll pass it over to Allison to discuss the impact on the ELL Department.
So we continue to have a trend, sorry, I should push this way, of increased arrivals of students with limited and interrupted formal education. We continue to get, almost on a weekly basis, another student who has crossed the border, who's starting at Newton North, they come with additional needs that we are continuing to provide them, and thinking about what other ways we need to support those students in the coming year. The enrollment numbers continue to go up, as I've discussed before. Last year, our October 1 number was 666. This year, on October 1, it was 782, and we are now at, I think, 8:50 today, maybe 8:48, but who knows who came today? We have other kids coming every day. So that includes 50 students we exited in December. So we've had a large number of students coming in, and I have an assumption that that will continue through next year. We really are working to think about with budget cuts, how we can maintain the required services and supports to meet our students. And the impact really is going to be that we are phasing out completely the use of ELL aids in our program, and we are going to bring in a couple of new teachers, teaching positions to our program, really focusing on highly qualified, licensed ELL teachers to provide instruction for students throughout the district.
And now we will take any questions, if you have any.
Thanks, Renee. Questions from the members? Go ahead, Kathy, and then Emily. Rajiv, and then Anping.
So I wanted to ask about the restoration of the 1.0.
Literacy specialist.
So how do you, how do you anticipate using a 1.0 across all of our departments?
Yeah, it's a good question.
What the models or what the utilities are.
We're still working this out. My hope is that, we currently have a 0.5 literacy specialist position at day. So we have that in addition to the 1.0 that is being restored. And it's my hope that with that FTE, along with perhaps some Title I funding, that we can assume will be coming to Bigelow, that we'll be able to have a 1.0 literacy specialist working roadside and a 1.0 literacy specialist working south side. And that model would comprise both the sort of traditional pull-out tier-two support that's been provided through our literacy lab program, as well as push-in supports working with general ed teachers across content areas. So that is the hope, that's my vision for bringing the program back next year. Certainly, in my opinion, still not adequate. I would love to see more literacy support, but I'm glad that we're recognizing that's a need that we continue to have.
Thanks.
Of course. Yeah.
The Title I funding in Bigelow, we know about that at some point this summer.
Yes.
Is that typically where you're at?
Yeah.
And then, I think, before this year, those services were provided during extension.
Yes. Yes. That's what I'm talking about, in terms of the pull-out or like the more traditional lab model, that happened during extension. So that would be when that pull-out support happens, and then the push-in support would happen during general ed content time.
Thanks, Kathy. Go ahead, Emily, and then Rajiv.
Kathy asked my literacy question, so that's good. So I'm actually really glad that we're also restoring the curriculum coordinators. I feel like that the general public doesn't understand how incredibly important their role is in the district. It's sort of a behind-the-scenes role, and so thank you so much for all the work that you do there, and I'm actually quite happy that we're restoring those positions. So that was one. And then my second question is, what is an inoperable instrument? You mentioned it, and I just, I've never heard that term before, and I would love to get a little information about what that means.
I know that Richard, I could explain, so Richard King has instruments that he gives out to students who are doing the band program, and some of them are probably older than they need to be. So looking at, looking at restoring some of those, so that every student has the ability to participate in the music program, regardless of ability to get an instrument.
I appreciate that I did not envision this, I envisioned, I don't know, some sort of curricular-based thing that had a very official title of an instrument. So thank you very much. Those are my questions.
You're not alone, Emily, I had the same thought. Go ahead, Rajiv, and then Anping.
So one comment and one question. The comment actually has to do with Newsela and Brain Pop, which my son has used and continues to use, it's been incredibly useful in their current form, especially Brain Pop, despite the annoying beep that you hear every few seconds. So have we, have we considered additional ways to continue the subscriptions? So that's one question. The other is related to ELL. Do we have any kind of prediction in terms of what the numbers will look like? Because I get that this is a very challenging budget, I understand why we're looking at cutting Aids. However, if we're looking at a trajectory like you just described, at a certain point, are we just going to be caught behind the eight ball in terms of struggling to hire people who we're going to need?
I actually think, I have no way of knowing what next year holds. I'm going to say that across communities near us, I'm in close contact with Waltham, the Director in Waltham, Belmont, Watertown, tend to be the three that I talk to most, we're all seeing that increase. I have no idea what, I think, you know, there are factors driving the numbers. I don't know where we're going to be with the conflict in the Ukraine, and I don't know what border policy is going to be. All of those could change these numbers any number of ways. I feel regardless that the phasing out of Aids and replacement with teachers is a better use of our money. My Aids have been a valuable part of our program, many of them are highly skilled, but there is both an expectation by the state that all ELL instruction is done by a qualified ELL teacher, but also there is, in my mind, a greater sort of ability to help accelerate the learning of students with the use of teachers. It's a trade-off, I understand, yeah, but I think it's the right trade-off.
And then Rajiv, in terms of your question around Brain Pop. So we are actually having those conversations in our department currently, because at this point, we don't have a replacement just yet. There is high usage of Brain Pop across the district, even in the high school level. And so we're going to think very deeply about how we might be able to supplement instruction in that way. But given the combined cost of the two programs together of approximately $100,000, that's where we have to cut.
Thanks, Rajiv. Go ahead, Anping.
Thanks. Yeah, Rajiv basically asked the second question, touched upon the English Language Learners. And as we all know, that this group is very... And um as we all know that this group is very uh for for the culture, language. And the socioeconomic status, a very vulnerable and um challenging group and family situation. So um, and I think uh, you know, you changed the model and I I I had a similar question. Because I'm thinking some students probably need a lot of uh individual support. It's it's not all classroom instruction. These students came from the family and a lot of a challenging life. So um, I think teacher uh AIDS might play some role individually. I don't know exactly, but I I I would think. And plus, uh as you mentioned, um, or the the new term, the how to pronounce that term sleeve or.
Slide.
Slide.
Students with limited or interrupted formal education.
Yeah, you see, you know, uh limited and interrupted formal education. That that speaks a lot about these students' background. And uh uh as you mentioned, the you know, uh Ukraine, the war torn area, all the South Africa, uh uh South America. I would think i- if those families come here, it's a very difficult process. They're mentally, socially, uh emotionally, they will really uh already impact tremendously. So again, I I think you guys doing a tremendous work. And with increase of these students and they're almost coming every every day, every week, right?
It's it's. At fifty since the winter break, so.
So they need a lot of support. I did not hear clearly. So any budget impact on? Your department or overall?
I'm I I don't know what the final number was. Fifty thousand.
Okay, well, i- i- it's really challenging why you have more uh, you know, uh uh work to do. Why you have limited uh financial uh, you know, uh this limited uh. Uh financial support, you know, in many ways. So I just want to highlight those challenges and I appreciate you guys doing a lot of work. Thanks.
Thank you, Anping. Chris, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I did have a question. Thanks, Tanya. Um, thanks, everybody. Uh, so I have one follow-up question on the ELL piece. And then I have one just kind of budgetary number question. Um, so on the end, I I appreciate you recognizing this is this is a trade-off. Is this a, I mean, is this is this a really, when we get down to it, like a breadth first depth kind of uh trade-off? Where we're, I mean, we're circling the wagons around those students who are needed intensely. And students who need it less intensely are going to, you know, maybe see a lower level of service than um currently.
So first off, I would say compared to most districts, we provide an enormous amount of service for students. Um, but I think that when we look at the cut that I was asked to make, I was going to lose. Over half of my aides through that cut already. At that point, and and again, um phasing out of AIDS has been ongoing since I've been director. As stu- and it's been done through attrition. So as aides have left, we have turned that into teacher FTE. Because we really believe in the strength of having a certified teacher and that is the expectation also from the state. So with this cut, I am then left with, I think, three or four aides left. And at that point, for me, it is better that we move on to certified teachers.
That's fair enough. Um, and then my my budgetary numbers question, and I apologize. Cause I had my notes written down in my physical budget book and I left it on my desk at home. Um, he but if you if I look at my responsibility center, uh FTEs are increasing from twelve to fifteen. For teaching and learning staffing um over the course of the year. The budget numbers are going down by two hundred and fifty thousand. I know a hundred thousand of that's coming from subscriptions. There's.
And a hundred and fifty is.
A hundred and fifty is the the aide versus um uh versus teacher, but that's going to be lower number of FTEs.
Yes.
Obviously. So I'm I'm just trying to reconcile like is, do we have a detail of kind of how that breaks out?
Uh, I could get you that detail.
That'd be perfect.
Yep.
I don't need it this second.
Okay, great.
That would be great if you could uh if you could provide that and just so I can reconcile how, you know, the 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 FTEs versus the dollars. Kind of all all works out.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Kathy, did you want to say something?
I I just wanted to say, and I was glad that Allison mentioned the enormous amount of support. That you provide to your uh English language learners, which is required by the state.
Yeah.
So again, it is closely monitored. There is that expectation. Uh so it's. When we do talk about reductions, you know, clearly we're making a change uh in how we deliver our delivery model, which as you said, you've been phasing it. But there is that requirement and we'll continue to do that and we'll keep the committee updated if there are any concerns. Yes.
Thanks Kathy. Go ahead Cove and then Kathy Shields.
Hi, yeah, I mean, I um, I was wondering with the EL teachers. I understand definitely why you would want to swap them for the teachers versus the aides. Um, I was wondering, you know, in my experience, i- if. I- it's unpredictable where students will come into the district and how many students will come into the district and I deal with this in my day job as well. Um, so I just wonder if if there's some way to like leave uh some flex like we did in the elementary budget. Those three teachers that would be on call, for example, if we need them to reduce class size at one of the schools. I'm wondering if EL teachers could kind of be considered in that um, you know, uh bucket, I guess, as a contingency. Depending on where you get and what the needs are.
I don't know specifically about that bucket, but I will tell you that the EL depart- ELL department is set up in such way. That we always have one or two district-wide teachers held in sort of reserve. And then they are placed um depending upon um what our different enrollment is. I have no, it it's also not only the overall enrollment number, but it's hard to know whether like Zervis is at fifty-eight right now. And I haven't been above fifty at Zervis in years. Who knows why that has happened? So we now have um our two district-wide teachers at four of the elementary schools. Trying to help with the influxes that have happened at those particular places.
Okay, that 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 makes sense. I just think I know how hard it is to plan, especially when a lot of these students come in in the middle of the year. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm also sad about the New Zell and the Brain Pop, but I I certainly, you know, wouldn't trade them for teachers. I, you know, I just, I I wonder if they would cut a deal with us or anything. Um, that's probably not possible. But um, that's my pipe dream.
All set Cove?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mayor Fuller, any questions or comments? Great. Um, so sure, sorry about that Kathy, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. I I I thought I saw it, but I I like I said, I left my, all my notes are on my physical copy. Old like that.
Thanks Kathy. I'm old like that as well. Um, so I I wanted to just reiterate. Rajiv and Anping really uh hit the thrust of of my questions. Um, but I wanted to reiterate that a phased-down aide model has always been the approach. And you're phasing uh down your aides due to attrition. As folks leave, you're looking to sunset that position or transition it to a highly qualified um teacher.
Yeah.
So I I think that's, that helps me kind of square some of these changes to say that. Uh, in one hand, you're reducing, but you're really gaining so much more in terms of what you're able to provide to your kids. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, and then of course, I'm with everybody else with the New Zella and the Brain Pop. I I think where I'm landing is just some curiosity about our overall. Um, the utility of our devices, especially in the grades that we've expanded um beyond. So the younger grades um and how. Essentially, we're reducing the tools that you have access to. And we're still keeping the devices. I I get it. We don't have the funds that we wished we had, but at this, at some point, I guess that's on uh Monday. When we have our IT discussion, Stephen, I'll be circling back around uh this conversation with you. But it just, it strikes me that we're, we're really kind of hampering our our ability to utilize fully. This this, the technology that we've um expanded so far in the district due to the pandemic. Um, anyhow, that's, that's a discussion for Monday.
I was just going to say, I'll I'll leave that to Stephen to answer, but there are so many other applications and software that we use. Um, these are just two of the highly used ones and actually pretty uh expensive as well.
I know. Fair point. Very well made and I I, yeah, we'll talk about more on on Monday, Stephen. Um, thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much Allison. Thank you Jen. Thank you Joel. Thank you Renee.
Hello.
Hi, good evening. I too brought a team of folks uh who I will introduce momentarily. And we also have a panelist who uh is zooming in tonight. Um, good evening, everybody. So I'll get started first by introducing the team I have. We have Maura Tynes, who's the Director of Elementary Special Education. Melissa Gamble, Director of Secondary Special Education. And Shannon Robichaud, who is our Director of Out-of-District Placements. Um, we also have joining us tonight online is Kathleen Browning, who's the Director of the Newton Early Childhood Program. So I'll start tonight's presentation with a big picture overview of the major departments that make up the Office uh Office of Student Services. Most people think of special education as the Office of Student Services. And what is as equally as important is the work that falls under student support. Which is made up of programs, structures and staffing, including mental health, counseling, social emotional learning and multi-tiered systems of support. MTSS will be mentioned a few times tonight during our presentation. It's work that doesn't sit squarely in the Office of Student Services, but rather is shared among all of our offices. Because it does encompass all of our students and is the actual infrastructure in which all of our students learn. So here's a table that actually summarizes where the Student Services Office ultimately landed with FTEs. As part of the FY twenty-four budgeting process. So to prepare for the unknowns and what we know are the trends from the past, we're adding twelve point nine FTEs. All of which are Unit C positions for the different levels, including early childhood at NECP. You'll see that there will be eighteen point seven FTEs that are staffing reductions and eliminations. As well as adjustments to programming, which we will also discuss discuss in subsequent slides. This totals for Student Services, a five point eight FTE cut to the FY twenty-four budget. I'd also like to take the opportunity now, um just as the superintendent did, to thank the mayor for working with the district. And providing the one-time city bridge funding in response to the alarmingly high fourteen percent increase in out-of-district tuitions. By um the Operational Services Division um State Department. So the content on this slide is actually not new. It's just in a different graphic to better to better illustrate the direct impacts to the major changes from this budget cycle. You will see in subsequent slides what the reductions in special education staffing looks like and its impacts. We will also share more information on the expansion of the Stride program at the elementary level. Stride is our citywide program for students with autism. Number three here marks a decrease in contracted services for staff, which I actually won't cover tonight, but it is important to mention. That the budget landscape had us looking more closely at the areas that didn't directly impact students. The contracted services for staff retains professional development opportunities. And based on what I've had access to from previous budgets here, it is a shift to not have as much money in our accounts. Uh, to provide learning opportunities for staff. We're seeking them. So I wanted to make sure that that was noted. So before I move into the next section, I do want to share that what I hope you'll see reflected in our presentation tonight. Is that my team and I holding true to the budget guidelines that the committee set for this year. The specific budget guidelines that we followed were to preserve mental health supports and continue with program services and systems. That deliver essential, high-quality learning experiences for students with disabilities. Lastly, our goal was, when possible, to keep these students in district, even if it means investing in in-house programming. Moving on, I'll first present changes impacting the budget from student supports and then we'll go into special education. So you've seen a similar graphic, but with different content in it. Um, this is a representation of the different areas of work that sits in student supports. Together, these areas ensure that we are supporting the whole child. The top three dark green circles represent the proactive work that we do in schools. That teach our students about their emotions and how we respond to them, in addition to how we interact with each other. They also encompass the planning work, such as course selection and post-secondary planning. A little more straightforward and equally as important to assure us, to ensure our students get what they need as they make their way through the grades. The circles also represent the more response-heavy work, the crisis intervention that our mental health professionals are trained to engage in. On the bottom, the lighter two circles are areas of work that is shared and again, doesn't fit squarely within our office. School nurses, yes, work in our schools, but they're overseen by Ruth Hoshino uh in the Office of Health and Human Services. She's been a wonderful partner to our office, by the way. Um, this next bubble again is MTSS. It's work that's owned by all of us um on central uh on central staff. So in the slides where we detail the reductions, I've parsed them out so that you can see what are enrollment-driven and what are budget-driven. Here I share with you budget-driven reductions as part of student supports. The first here is an administrator position. It's the second in two years from our office. You may recall that last year, uh, the um Assistant Director for Student Services position, which is a Unit B position, is that accurate? Uh, was cut. The uh position here though, the Coordinator of MTSS, um was actually held by uh Dr. Art Ferguson. This position went unfilled this year and the work that you see here in those bullets has been taken on by various administrators and staff, including myself. I'm proud of the work that the staff have been able to push, but there's so much, there is so much more by way of preventative work that we could be doing. We have an analogous position in Jesse Krotig, who does much of this work at the elementary level. The second reduction is a point two five FTE of a clinical care coordinator at Newton North. Have consulted a bunch with the North team and they will be able to streamline the clinical care support by embedding it. Into the intervention prevention counseling position. Before I get to the next reduction slide, I'd just like to review for the committee. The therapeutic program offerings at the secondary level at in their, in our district. I'm incredibly proud of the level of service and different offerings we have for students who are struggling. As a side note, I had two districts reach out to me last week, coincidentally asking what types of programs we have in district. Cause they had heard that we had them. A lot of districts actually don't have this menu of offerings that we do for this profile of student. Um, you'll see by looking at this, I hope, an asterisk, which indicates that the program is open to general education students as well. So listed first here is Spring Board, which is a therapeutic environment that supports students' social, emotional and academic needs. While offering a standard space general education curriculum. It's a short-term program where most students actually transition, transition back to their home high school. On average, there are twenty to thirty students in the program. Next up is Central High School, which is a separate public day school for students in special education. It's an intensive therapeutic school located actually here in the ground floor of uh the Ed Center and houses between twenty-five to thirty students at once. Next are our Harbor programs. The middle school is actually also located here at the Ed Center. And the high school program is currently housed across the street from Newton South. Both of the Harbor programs offer a temporary stabilization program, offer offering a therapeutic milieu. If students continue to access Gen Ed curriculum and if they have IEP services, they receive them while they're at this program. The middle school will have ten to twelve students enrolled at once, while Harbor High has no more than eight enrolled at a time. So because of the budget constraints, we did look at where we may be able to consolidate as there are overlaps in the therapeutic offerings in the district. One area is the Harbor High program, which we saw on the previous slide, is a temporary stabilization program. We didn't take lightly to the health and well-being of our students who need this type of program, who have this level of need. Um, ultimately, knowing what the um existing therapeutic programs here at the Ed Center can do. In terms of meeting needs um of uh this subset of the population, we were comfortable making this change. There is an existing community of students here. There is an existing community of students here. There are adults who have been specially trained to work with, um, this high level of need, so we felt comfortable knowing that the landing pad, so to speak, already existed and was a soft one. So what we will be doing is restructuring the temporary high school stabilization, um, program by embedding it into existing programs here at the Ed Center. We're looking to relocate the 1.0 clinician position currently assigned to Harbor High, um, and we will transfer that position to the Spring Board program. Again, because we wanted to preserve the mental health support available to students. We will reduce the existing FTE within, uh, Harbor by 1.5 positions. So currently, there are 3.0 full-time FTEs at Harbor High and partial FTEs adding to 1.0 FTE in the form of academic teachers from both of the high schools who provide GenEd content. We'll relocate those partial FTEs to Spring Board, uh, to ensure that students are accessing general ed content, continue to access general ed content. Um, I've been mentioning Spring Board, but there's actually capacity within Central High School as well to take students who are in need of temporary stabilization. Central High School already provides stabilization support, actually, for some of our high schoolers who attend out-of-district, uh, schools, and Shannon will speak a little bit, um, about the need actually that we're seeing for, um, in our students who are in out-of-district placements. Uh, those needs are also high. Uh, so back to Central High, taking high schoolers, um, for the stabilization support. Excuse me. Um, there are already systems and processes in place, uh, for the stabilization support. Um, and then, uh, a large percentage of students at Harbor High actually end up being recommended for Central High School following the stabilization and evaluation period. So being at this Ed Center would actually reduce, uh, transitions, um, for students who will go from Harbor High to Central. So next, we will review the FY24 budget moves in Special Education. So here, you will see the different positions that support special education from pre-K to post-secondary in NPS. In the middle is what we are known for across the state. Here in Newton, we provide high-quality special education services and supports, while to the extent possible, keeping students in district in inclusion in their least restrictive environment. It's not an easy feat, and it's achieved because of the positions that are listed here. I can't underscore enough what a strong and incredible team that I have who oversees special education. Maura and Melissa, obviously, are here with me tonight. Maura overseeing special education at NECP and at all of our elementary schools, including all of the citywide programs in our elementary schools. Melissa is her counterpart overseeing special education at the secondary level, which includes the therapeutic programs that I had just mentioned, as well as post-secondary education planning. Shannon has been at the helm of our out-of-district placements, working to ensure that only those students who truly need to learn outside of Newton are placed and also placed in the most appropriate settings. She also oversees all of the extended evaluations, so these are for students needing 45 placements, either in out-of-district placements or at Central High School. So we'll first start with NECP, our youngest learners, and move our way to the oldest. We want to share what enrollment looks like this year. We are serving approximately 230 students, 150 of whom are students with disabilities and are on IEPs. This also includes students who attend, uh, early childhood programs, uh, outside of NECP, who have special education needs, who, um, we are legally obligated to provide services to. So 150 includes, um, students who, uh, we call, uh, receiving walk-in services. I want to, uh, give a special credit to Kathleen Browning, Trish Stokes, and their team for overseeing the evaluation process. With 68 private preschools in Newton, it's not easy to look and find, to look for, uh, all of the students who may have disabilities, who would go through an evaluation process. Um, I think to date, it says here, there are 183 evaluations that have been completed, and we have 44 currently in process. In terms of future planning, Kathleen, Kathleen has shared that our early intervention partners, um, have let, have let us know that out of the 452, what, EI cases, 221 of them actually are residents here. Um, this is shy of half their program, so, um, it's a, it's certainly a big number. It speaks to the, um, quality of the program that we offer. Um, and the committee knows well that this year, we, NECP moved to their new location a couple blocks away on Watertown Street with 13 classrooms, um, with the capacity to open four more, um, should enrollment increase. So here's a three-year look at the special education numbers at NECP. You'll see that the numbers in this age group are pretty consistent. The, um, just of note, the out-of-district, um, student from last year aged out, which is why it's zero this year. So now for reductions at NECP, we're looking to reduce 1.4 teaching assistance and .9 out of an FTE of a behavior therapist. This will change the staffing model at NECP. What it will mean is that teaching assistants and behavior therapists will work with a higher staff-to-student ratio. It also means fewer staff to support our higher needs students. Examples are listed in those bullets there. It is important, and I want to make sure that folks understand that we will continue to maintain compliance with special education regulations, even with these cuts. Next, we have elementary special education.
I'll talk a little bit about this. Um, so similar to what we, um, just reported via Casey's information from Kathleen, which we appreciate Kathleen's contribution, um, is the three-year look back, um, in terms of numbers. So I think it's important to, just to take note, looking, um, at the decreased enrollment in Newton Public Schools has not caused a decrease in special education eligibility. So if you'll see, we ended last year in June at 836. To date, we are at, uh, 824 already eligible students in the elementary school. And I think it's notable, just to keep in mind, we have 107 evaluations that we anticipate doing between now and the end of the year. Some of those students will become eligible, some will not. But, um, that just gives you a sense, if we're moving beyond the 824, um, there's a possibility of minimally 107, um, moving ahead. You'll also note that over the last, um, couple of years, the out-of-district numbers have decreased. We have 11 to date with two pending. Um, and this has been a steady increase beyond just the three years that are reported here, and I would um, attribute this to our commitment to providing in-district programming. You might remember, we added programming last spring. Um, we added the third location of STRIDE at Bowen, and we also added the Elementary Reflections Program, which opened, um, this past September. And I think, um, our continued commitment to ensuring that students who can be educated within our district are, and that, um, is a contributor there for that. Again, to talk about STRIDE, so some of you may remember, we, uh, went together and toured STRIDE, uh, last spring when we were adding the first classroom at Bowen. And we, um, looking at enrollment and trends moving forward, recognized that we will need an additional classroom at Bowen. This will make all three schools have the same, um, experience, um, at STRIDE. It will provide a, a K to five experience for those students moving forward. This, um, is definitely, um, a clear need in that we know that there are six students who are coming into kindergarten, and they're very excited to start their kindergarten experience, um, who will need the STRIDE, um, supports that we have in place. I also monitor a number of students that move in, and so last summer, we had uh, 78 students on IEPs move in at the elementary level only. Uh, eight of those required STRIDE programming in order to participate, and so we will continue to monitor um, the needs as students, um, move into Newton that we aren't aware of yet.
So when we were looking at some of our youngest learners, we did consider all positions and ultimately decided to preserve those who have the qualifications to design specially, excuse me, design specially designed instruction. And so students who qualify for special education require specially designed instruction that's tailored to their learning profile. And so what we put forth here are a reduction in AIDS and behavior therapists. The impact here would be, um, more students in small, uh, learning groups. Next, we move on to special education for our middle and high schools.
Hi, good evening. Um, just like we did at the elementary level, I, we looked up the numbers for the past three years at the secondary level. The numbers at the middle school have remained, um, quite steady and even throughout. Um, right now, we, at the end of last year, we had 512 students on IEPs at all of our four middle schools. And right now, we are at 490, so they seem about on track, um, as they were, um, last year. Um, as far as the kids in out-of-district placements at the middle school, um, we've seen a little bit of a trend up in some of the numbers so far this year, from 26 last year to 35 this year. Um, a lot of this is due to some of the social-emotional needs, the, um, high anxiety some students are experiencing in the larger school environments. At the high school, um, we have seen through the 2021 and the 2122 school year, about an even rate of students on IEPs. At the end of last year, we had 660 students on IEPs across the two high schools. Right now, we are at 728, which is 68 students more than last year. And we still have a number of referrals that have come in. The high school has had a, a large number of referrals, um, for evaluations this year, and they continue to come in now. As far as the out-of-district rate for the high school, we tend to remain steady. Um, right now, we are at 77 students out in out-of-district placements. Um, last year, we were at 81 at the end of the year.
Thank you. So we'll start with the, uh, enrollment-driven reductions. At Bigelow, we will eliminate two positions, an inclusion facilitator and a special education teacher. Uh, Bigelow has the smallest caseloads compared to other middle schools, and with the enrollment decline, we can eliminate these two positions and still maintain small caseload sizes. Community Connections is our 18 to 22 post-secondary program for students who need just a bit more time and skill building, uh, to graduate. And so because of attrition, we can actually eliminate a, a, a current medical assistant, uh, position. Excuse me. At the high school, we're looking to reduce 1.7 teaching assistance. Uh, we are still monitoring the numbers in specialized programs, as well as the incoming needs to inform exactly from where. We have some ideas, but again, we want to have more information before we make that decision. The next two slides are budget-driven reductions. At the middle school, we can reduce by one special education teacher at each of the middle schools. Caseload numbers will increase, and, um, as Toby reported on Monday night, teams will also be larger as part of the overall teacher reductions at the middle school level. The next elimination, Toby actually spoke to, um, it happens to come out of the OSS budget, so I want to make sure I included it here. We can eliminate this position, and we would shift the student support and counseling supervision to the school's assistant principal for student services. For the high schools, we'll reduce 2.0 FTEs in special education positions at Newton South. They're still getting numbers in from, um, the middle schools as they, uh, as the eighth grade transition meetings are happening. Um, so once we, once they have more information, they'll be able to make some decisions there. Uh, but looking at predicted numbers, um, 2.0 FTE was what we were all comfortable with. If these are academic studies positions, then the small group sizes will increase, and the average size right now is between three to eight students. At Newton North, there will be a .25 reduction, which equals to about one block. And we would be happy to take your questions.
Thank you so much. Questions from members? I think they need a moment. See one from Chris and then Rajiv.
Thank you, everybody. So my questions, I want to take a little bit of, of the longer view here. And if, you know, this, this was a question that came up all the time as we were, um, you know, out doing the PTO meetings earlier this year, and folks were talking about the override, and you know, uh, one of, one of the questions we'd always get is, well, you know, enrollment's down so much, but you know, our staff has stayed the same. And if you look at the numbers from pre-pandemic to now, we've had a meaningful decline in classroom teachers, and we've had a meaningful increase in Student Services, and it's almost all coming from special education teachers and from aid specialists. So I guess the, the question, and you know, I mean, I'm not looking for, you know, it's 32.7 FTEs, but maybe you could just articulate, you know, the, where those numbers are coming from in terms of how many of them are IEP-related to a one-to-one aid-type situation? How many are citywide programs? How, like, where, where are all those FTEs going? And how much is, you know, there, there's going to be no scientific way to approach this, but, you know, kind of specifically related, just to the simple higher needs of students that we're seeing in, this year relative to, to 2019.
Yeah, I actually really appreciate this question because it touches upon, um, a number of areas that would drive this need. I think, um, I will, uh, punt it in a little bit to my directors to my left. But there was, if you, um, highlighted, you said FY19, so Student Services, actual FTEs, FY19 was 126.3. FY21, we hit 128. If we're looking at AIDS, FY19, 496, and this is all AIDS. FY21, 567 AIDS, which I think may be what you're referencing, uh, some bits of it in your question. My understanding is this is general education AIDS and special education AIDS, and the increase, I can't say all of them, but a good portion of them comes from the hybrid model that we were in during COVID, where we needed more, um, folks essentially to help students access either remote learning or when they were in the, um, when they were actually in the buildings. Some of it also is because we did create programs, citywide programs, or add to them, which Maura can speak to. Um, and then Shannon, feel free to add anything in terms of out-of-district needs too that would have increased these FTEs.
So just to your part of the question about the long game, um, even longer than, you know, earlier than 2019, I'm, I want to think about a little bit. Um, and if we go back, we would, um, just think about the STRIDE programming. And many years ago, the STRIDE program was one classroom at Countryside. That was the level of need that we had at that time. And if you fast forward to now, what we're projecting just at elementary is six full classrooms of students who need that level of support. And so the increase in students with that particular diagnosis is not new to Newton or exclusive to Newton. The CDC reports an increase in students with a diagnosis of autism. And I think we should feel proud about the job that we've done working with students of this profile. And we have a lot of families who contact us from many locations, asking about programming, either because they, they want to replicate in their district, or they're looking to try to come to Newton, um, to experience that for their child. So I think that's a part of what we're seeing in the long game. Additionally, Casey, um, noted citywide programming addition. So every time we add a citywide program, we need teachers and we need often teaching assistants. And I don't think that we're ever going to be in a situation where we can say teaching assistants are not required, although, um, certainly, um, having certified staff in front of children is, is preferable. Um, all of those programs need people, and often, they need a number of people. It's not, um, we're not in a situation where students of these profile can manage with a single adult. So I think that is some of what you're seeing over 10-plus, 12-plus years, um, as well.
Maura, can you just speak a little bit to the move-ins last summer, which were astronomical?
Yes, so, um, you know, it is challenging to predict the level of, um, Unit C need. This is the AIDS and the behavior therapists that we use, um, when we're, um, asked to create the budget. So I do and did track this past summer, um, students that moved in to Newton Public Schools, so students that we had no awareness of, of course. And at the elementary only, we had 78 students move in on IEPs. Um, and we needed to be prepared to receive them, um, welcome them, and provide services that they are entitled to receive, um, when they came in on day one. and provide services that they are entitled to receive when they came in on day one. So that, that's a lot of children, and many of those children had a very high level of need, meaning they were not children who were simply joining a group that was already established. Many of those children needed citywide programs. They needed one-to-one staffing for safety reasons and needed very carefully designed modified curriculum in order to meet their needs and their goals in their I E P. So we, of course, don't know what that will be this coming summer, but we will track it again to see how many students we need to welcome in.
And I would just add the creation and the addition of the, the citywide programs. Without that level of staffing, that support, then most of the students would likely end up out of district at a very high cost.
Great, thank you. As a parent of a child in a citywide program, I'm, I'm always amazed at the amount of, you know, the, the dedication of the, his team and the staff, and it's, it's great. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Go ahead, Rajiv, and then Anping, then Emily.
Thank, thank you for the presentation. Casey, I noticed one, one difference between the previous and the, the current one, and I just wanted to validate it. I know previously, one of the potential challenges was the caseload increase. Across the board, special ed and non-special ed, we were talking about having higher caseloads for adjustment counselors, for, for other therapeutic experts and so on. Have, have you been able to mostly mitigate that in, in what you're presenting here?
Yeah, that was one of our, that was part, that was one of the budget guidelines, was to take into, prioritize the mental health needs of students, which is why you see very few, actually, I'm just running through the list right now, but I don't think there are any mental health reductions, uh, mental professional reductions.
Then, um, did, did you end up reducing the, I guess, the administrative caseloads? Because you, you work in an area that's, that's so bureaucracy intensive in terms of what has to be reported to the state and, and other, kind of other governing bodies. But do, do we still have reasonable coverage, especially given the higher population of students coming in to, to make sure that we're, we're covered in terms of all the filings that have to happen?
Yeah, I can let Maura and Melissa speak to it since they work more directly with the assistant directors and the high school department heads.
I, I would say, you know, it's important to recognize that we know that teachers are going to be, you know, working a lot harder with higher number of children in their classroom. We know special education teachers are going to be working harder with higher caseloads and larger groups of children. And I think the same will be for the special ed administrators. There, there'll be more students that need to be focused on if our numbers keep trending the way they're trending and we keep the F T E the same. But I would anticipate, similar to last year, when, you know, we knew that people would be taking on responsibilities and roles they might not have at that time, I assume that will be happening again.
Sorry, that's the same at the secondary level too. They will be taking on more roles as well. And, but I think they have a, a good administrative team in each of the buildings that they support one another. While there might be one person who's the administrator for special education in the building, they do work as teams in the buildings at the middle school and the high school to support one another.
Thanks, Rajiv. Go ahead, Anping, and then Emily, and then Kathy.
Well, thank you very much for your tremendous work. I'd like to add to Chris's shout-out that Newton has been well-known for special education statewide or even nationwide. As Melissa, you mentioned that some other districts want to either replicate or even send the kids here, students here. This is wonderful. But, but also we know it's, it's very challenging and those programs and constantly changing and with the legal and other, you know, uh, uh, medical field constantly changing. And so you, you guys have to look out for different programs. Now with this budget cut, now it's, 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 it's very challenging. And I heard about the Harbor School, you guys want to kind of reform a little bit how to move around. And I will not be surprised, we might receive some letters, parents might not be happy, make all those changes. And it's, it's challenging. So I just want to say that. And I think it's important, we, we recognize that. And also during the past few years, if my number is correct, of overall student, special needs students, percentage drops a little bit from close to twenty percent now to about eighteen percent. And also the budget, I believe, also going down a little bit because we have less students going out of district. And that saves tremendous money, I understand. And I think you guys working really hard, and I know sometime could be legal battle to see how if you can reduce some students. And this is a little bit different from the E L program. Because E L program, mostly families come from, you know, other countries. The parents don't know how to advocate for their kids. But special needs programs might be a little bit different. Even though I heard the stories, some immigrant families, you know, I heard a couple of stories, the parents refuse to accept I E P program, school already developed for them because they, they are concerned about other issues, you know. To some Asian families, they're losing their face. Oh, your kid's now in special needs program. So there are a lot of education work, how to work with families. Now, one quick question, I, I did ask, did not understand fully, is about the number here. Here talking about the future planning. The, our early intervention partners have notified N P S that of four hundred fifty-two E L cases, two hundred twenty-one reside in Newton. And the age three, this is just shy of half of the program. So what does mean, uh, uh, four hundred fifty E I cases half reside in Newton, does that mean the other half live in other towns or cities, but they will be coming to Newton?
So Kathleen, actually, Kathleen can take this question.
Yeah, please.
Hi there. Can everybody, can everybody hear me? Wonderful. Thanks for the question, Anping. The early intervention program that mainly is where our students who, when they turn three, come to N E C P is called Riverside Early Intervention, and it's located in Needham, but it covers the towns of Newton, Needham, Weston, and Wellesley. Occasionally, we'll get a referral from the early intervention program in Wallfam called Thome, but it's more rare that we get a referral from Thome. And we can also get a couple of referrals occasionally from one of the Boston-based early intervention programs. If, for example, a family works in Boston and a child is in a daycare in Boston, so the family might engage with a Boston-based early intervention so that somebody can go to their child's daycare and see them there. In regards to Riverside itself, the four hundred and fifty-one number is their total caseload that they have right now. And again, around half of those students are residents of Newton. But these are children that are all currently between the ages of zero and turning three. So what ends up happening is we don't know that all of those children are going to come to Newton because somebody who's twenty-four months or eighteen months and is referred to early intervention may make a lot of progress and never actually be referred then to N E C P. And also, conversely, some students are late referrals to N E C P. So all of a sudden, I'll get a call when a child's thirty-four months, that somebody just called early intervention and the child qualified, and then we have to get going really quickly for that child because in two months, they'll be three years old. Every single student who is somebody that early intervention wants to refer to N E C P, I do a transition planning conference with that family, usually around when the child's thirty months of age to start the process for them to understand how to begin testing with the Newton schools to determine if we think the child's eligible for services when they're three.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Anping. Um, go ahead, Kathy. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong list. Emily and then Kathy.
Hi, everyone. Welcome. So glad you're here. I actually have a follow-up question for Kathleen first, which was, I know that we, we, you and I have talked about, and also, where I think you and I have also talked about, this incoming potential bubble that was in E I moving towards us. What are the budget implications? And I know, like, I, it's totally unknown now, but I'm just wondering in terms of next year or the year after, or even the year after, um, in terms of what impact this could potentially have on N E C P. And if, if there is one next year, which I assume that there isn't, you've already accounted for that in this budget, but just from a long, a long view, uh, what the future might hold.
Kathleen give details, but I'll just jump in and say that Kathleen is correct, that some of the students that E I has notified us about, some of them will need support at N E C P, and some of them may not. So it's really hard to predict, although that number is very large. So we can predict a good portion of them will come. What we don't know is any information about those little ones. They may have significant disabilities and they may not, and we just don't know that yet. So it is very challenging to plan when they're so very young and their development is really very quick. And with that intervention, we would expect to see some progress. And there are certain students who will need special education regardless of the amount of E I that they received. But I'll let Kathleen give the details because she has them.
Certainly. Just to piggyback on what Maura is saying, the other thing about early intervention, they're not allowed to give me much information until the parents sign that they can. And that usually happens around twenty-seven to thirty months, so that's when I hear more about them. So, um, there are some students who early intervention has from birth because a child might be born very premature or what have you, be born with a syndrome or something to that effect. So they're in early intervention for a long time. And then there's the other children that are, like I said, the later referrals. So it's very hard to predict from early intervention. And then separately, we get calls constantly, averaging three to four, sometimes even five a week, where families just call us and their child's four or four and a half, and a teacher has raised a concern. So those children have never gotten any intervention or maybe got early intervention and early intervention discharged them, and then another concern manifested itself as they aged. From the perspective of the F T Es, you know, as we're in the slides, the regulations at preschool, for example, in an integrated preschool classroom, which a majority of our classrooms are for fifteen students, we are, keep a fifty-one forty-nine ratio, meaning fifty-one percent are community peers who pay tuition and forty-nine percent are students on I E Ps. So it works out to be eight community peers and seven special education students. And that's a total of fifteen, and the DESI regulations for that is one teacher and two assistants. So, I mean, sorry, one teacher and one assistant, and we have one teacher and two assistants. And we have that for many, many reasons, as I can assure that most of you can imagine with a classroom full of three-year-olds. So these changes do affect N E C P in the sense that, you know, losing the equivalent of a one point four F T E of aids is two twenty-eight hour teaching assistants. So it's concerning, but we still will not be out of compliance.
Great, thank you. I have two more quick questions, if that's okay. So one is, I'm curious why we're jumping to South. So just down from the little ones to the high schoolers, so it's South now. So, so the, there seem to be much higher reductions in spread F T Es in South than there is at North. And I'm wondering, is that a case, is there a lower caseload at South, or like, why is that split not more even?
So we did a deep dive on all the numbers within both schools, and it seemed from the numbers that we had before us that South could take this reduction and still service, meet all the needs on the I E Ps and still have a high level of service at the school.
Some of the numbers that Melissa is referencing specifically are the academic studies, the academic studies periods, and looking at the number of sections, North offers many more sections. And I don't know how the, we'll have to look at the trends to see how the I E Ps flow into each of the high schools, but there are more students who need academic studies. So there are more kids at North who have academic studies on their I E Ps than at South.
I think a kiddo who was both in N E C P, E I, and in academic studies, I was just wondering. My last question is, and you probably don't know this, and I know that Toby's not here tonight, but what's happening to the space that the Harbor High used to be or will use to be in, at, at South? Is it going to be repurposed for another special education program? Is it gonna become a shed again? What's it, what's it gonna, what's gonna happen to it?
Yeah, so Melissa and I actually toured it not that long ago, and we hope, we hope that it will not be a shed again because it's actually a beautiful space, spaces, including what looks like a garage in the beginning when you first walk in. My understanding is that the Liger Bots team uses that, which is wonderful. So we do have some ideas that we don't want to make public right now, but we do want to make use of it specifically for students with disabilities.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Emily. Go ahead, Kathy.
Maybe turning into the N E C P show, but my question was N E C P focused. Now that we have more space at N E C P, like physical space, which we've been talking about for a long time, I, I know in past years, we've talked about being able to accept more community peers into the program and perhaps considering tuition increases. Is that, I don't see that as part of this budget. What you're thinking about adding a classroom there and the, the sort of, the impact of the tuition coverage of that person versus the need for funding that additional teaching position.
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah, it's one that we, Liam and I have maybe once a week in terms of just knowing that it is revenue, and we know we offer high-quality early childhood services. I don't know exactly the impact on the ground, so I'll let Kathleen speak to that. When we open, you know, we do have capacity for four more classrooms. So I'll let you speak to that piece. And then Liam, I don't know if there's anything you want to add in terms of, because we did, because of the pandemic and because of the move, we, as you know, tuition stayed the same. There will be an increase next year. But in terms of subsequent, subsequent years, I don't know what has been projected out.
I can certainly answer that very easily. So historically, so I've been the director at N E C P since two thousand sixteen, in the district since nineteen ninety-six. So when we, when I first began in ninety-six, I was a speech pathologist at the preschool, and we only had four classrooms. So now we have thirteen. And, you know, I, we always joke about if you build it, they will come, but Newton built it and they are coming. And the, we so appreciated the district in regards to our four empty classrooms. They actually furnished two of the four in preparation for more classrooms to be open. So they're there and they're ready. From the tuition perspective, typically, it was every, it was two to three percent a year that tuition would go up at N E C P. During the pandemic, we did not raise tuition. It was too much of an unstable financial time for families, and we wanted children to be in school. And, and also, we did, because of the pandemic, we had to reduce our community peers during that time just because of numbers of students in classrooms. We are obviously out of that time now and back up to our eight community peers. Last year, or this, actually this school year, sorry, we did not raise tuition at all due to the move. We were able to have two days off to unpack in December and two days off meeting, no children, but the staff was there to unpack in January before we welcomed the students back in. So we didn't want to increase tuition this year, knowing that there were going to be four less days that the family would have schooling for the children. So this coming year, we are increasing the tuition, is going five point eight percent is the increase for this coming year. And that's a discussion that I have with Liam every single year around October because we start enrolling in November. So we talk about that, and I know that they, that, you know, we have already kind of talked about the fact that it's going to have to go up again next year by more than probably the two to three percent. So that is definitely something that's in planning. And then just to say one last thing, we have been doing developmental observations of students so we can meet our new ones coming in, and it's been going well. We are close to full enrollment right now. There's a few, few little spots open. But Cynthia Curtis, our executive assistant, has been working diligently to get contracts out to families and get those returned so that we really know where we stand. Of course, our five-hour placements are- Of course, our five-hour placements are much more popular than our three-hour placements. And we're doing a little bit of adjusting this year to have a few more five-hour placements, which is revenue to the city, of course, and it's also a more desirable timeframe for the families.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So what percentage of a classroom teacher's compensation is covered by the tuition-paying students? Classroom that you open, assuming it has the eight to seven split, what percentage of that teacher's compensation is covered by the eight tuition-paying students?
It's a, it's a really great question, a little bit for Liam. It's goes, it's our revolving account. And so our revolving account pays for a variety of different things for NECP. So there are some staff salaries coming out of that, but there's also other things coming out of that. So I know that Liam, I see him walking up there, he has more of that revolving account information.
All right, no problem. Good evening, everybody. So yeah, this is just a, it's not, we just basically get, this is in a revolving account. I need to take a look at this Newton preschool tuition. We have been.
Liam, it's perfectly fine to say, I'll get back to you.
Yeah, why not get back to you? It's it's in the five to six, in the five to six hundred thousand range. So we do offset basically teachers. It's probably in the five to six FTE that we do. But let me get back to to the school committee on that.
And I believe, I believe in the change. I I want to say it's around six hundred, and I think in the change, it's going, it's a five percent increase or what have you. It will go seven to seven fifty, I believe, for this coming year.
All set, Kathy?
And I just, Liam, since you'll get back to me, it it, the better question is probably not what percentage of a teacher's, but what percentage of a classroom staff, since it's a teacher and a teaching and two teaching assistants? I I guess what I'm trying to figure out is how much, how much does it cost our budget to add a classroom?
And I think Kathy, it's also dependent, obviously, an integrated preschool classroom has community peers that bring in the tuition. A Stride classroom is a sub-separate classroom and does not. As Maura has spoken about, Stride started with one classroom at Countryside, and now they're up to six classrooms for elementary. We also started with one, and we, when we moved to one fifty Jackson Road in two thousand sixteen, we opened a second one. So, you know, as kind of trends go, there is the potential that one of these classrooms down the road might need to be a Stride classroom. And we just don't know that yet.
Thanks, Kathy. And thanks, Liam, for the assist. Any questions from Cove or Mayor Fuller? Questions, comments? Cove, all set?
Yeah, I'm okay. Thank you. It was really informative.
Great, thanks, Cove. So for me, I guess I'm thinking along the lines of, that Emily was thinking about, which is future planning. And slightly different vein, I know it's hard to dream big when you're being asked to reduce and cut. But if we're keeping an eye on future planning in terms of having a North Side and a South Side program where children can progress through and stay kind of in the cohorts, in, not the cohorts, but it's something, Maura, you talked about with the school committee when we were doing our Stride visits last year. How do we keep that? How do we keep that in our planning budgetarily? Meaning, it's it's something that I've talked about in the past where you kind of have to put your, kind of have to put the costs together and put it down on paper and say, we can't get to it yet. But if we had our, you know, our, our resources, this is what we would do, and we would look to implement in X year out. So is that something that we can start seeing? And that might be something where, I know Casey, you're working with Liam, and you're trying to figure out a mechanism for doing that. But it would really just help us keep our eye on that objective in the budget. And Liam, I don't know, it's something, it would just be, it would be nice to be able to see and and plan that far out. Even, even in the times when we're looking to cut our budget, we have to keep an eye on the improvements across the board.
So as I said before, a lot of things are unknown, of course, and we do our best to respond and react to the population before us, which is sort of ever-changing, and that's part of the, the fun and the job is keeping on your toes and ensuring we have something else we need to do. And we didn't know we needed to do that two months ago, and let's dig in and let's do that now. Some things we can predict, though, and I think what we were speaking about was we can look forward and say the Lincoln Elliott School is going to be rebuilt, and we are going to have a citywide program in there. We've planned that. Emily and I have spent a lot of time on meetings with the architects. That's, that's done. It's, when the building's built, we are ready. And I'm not concerned about locating students to engage in that sort of support as needed. There's also work that Melissa and I will do together and already do together, which is look at what's happening in the lower grades and what was that translation look like for the upper grades? It's not identical. It's not developmentally appropriate to just replicate what's happening for second graders, for eighth graders, for twelfth graders, of course. But we will work together and see what do we need to, to shift and adjust to meet the students' needs as we see a bump in a population or a bubble in a population and prepare for that. So some things we certainly can prepare for, and then some, some things we can't, and especially students who are moving into Newton. We don't know those things.
There's also some heavy monitoring to, by Shannon, Amanda Collins, our financial manager, in terms of looking all of our students who are in out-of-district placements, who may need to move to more restrictive settings or those who we likely are bringing back to the high school. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add.
And I was just, just to to piggyback off of Maura, I think, you know, Maura and Melissa do a very good job of working with us to see who's ready to come back. And if we're creating programs, do you, are there students that would be a good fit for this program so that we can bring them back and not have them in out-of-district tuition? So every year, we work collaboratively, and we bring a number of students back every year, which kind of helps level our numbers of tuition.
Emily, go ahead.
One quick thing, just to piggyback on what Maura was saying in terms of Lincoln Elliott, but also in terms of future building projects, that that's always a conversation around future building projects. And whether or not, you know, we want the flexibility to possibly house a citywide program in a new building. And if that's, just, that's part of the conversation in the process.
And I heard the word flexibility, so I, I think that's great. Yep, yep. So another question that was very small. I heard that the Harbor High program is, is that eight students? Is that a cap or is that due to just that's best practice for that model of program?
It is the best practice for that model of program. The, the intensive needs of the students who come into the program sometimes warrant more intervention by the adults that are there. And if you expand it too much, then they can't give them the attention that they need. So it is the best practice for that high school program, yes.
Okay, great. And the last one is a, a request, a shameless request for the school committee to be invited to any end-of-the-year celebrations, graduations for Springboard and Central. We would love to show our support for those students.
You bet. We'll make sure you all get an invitation.
Absolutely. So anything, any final thoughts from, oh, go ahead, Anping.
Just a quick question. First of all, probably I mispronounced your name. I'm sorry. Yeah, Maura, yeah. By the way, I haven't heard you guys talking about five-oh students. I don't know if this is a part of us, school service category or could be different. You know, we often heard five-oh-four students. I don't know any rough number, or I know it's changeable very quickly depending on the specific conditions of students. Let's say a few things about the five-oh students.
Sure, yeah. So I don't have the exact numbers, and I'm happy to get those for you. But based on what was reported to me recently by our two psychologists who are actually taking on some of the role that Dr. Art Ferguson did in the coordinator position that we have unfilled this year. Our psychologists are pretty involved in the development of five-oh-four plans. And what we're hearing across all levels is that there is a significant increase in five-oh-fours. Most of them are due to social emotional concerns.
That's, that's what I suspected. But but we don't have a rough number. I assume the high schools might have a little bit more students, possibly.
I'll take a look and I'll get back to you. I I compiled them while I was looking at this presentation, and it just became too meaty, but I'm happy to get those to you.
Yeah, thanks.
Great. So thank you so much. We appreciate you walking us through the impacts of the changes and the reductions. So thank you, Maura. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Kathleen, and thank you, Casey. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to thank the entire team because I purposefully talked about where we were at. And we knew at that time that we needed to support those students that needed support even during this type of, of a budget. The team came together. They worked collaboratively. I don't know. We see that. So I want to thank the entire team that has been working on this for months to to really support each other.
Thanks, Kathy. So we are now going to go back to our earlier skipped consent agenda item. It was a approval of a Metco Supplemental Special Education Grant requested by Amy Mistrow, our Director of Business Operations. Is there a motion to approve the item on the consent agenda? Thank you, Anping. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Rajiv. So we will now do a quick roll call vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four, yes. Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six, it's absent. Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes.
Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you so much. All righty. With that, we've concluded the posted business for tonight's meeting. Our next meeting will be on April tenth, and we'll conclude, we will conclude our special budget presentations with an IT, library, business, finance, planning, and operations update or FY twenty-four budget presentation. As a reminder, we will have a public hearing on April twelve. Is there something I forgot? Okay. Thank you to our central staff and big thanks to everyone for watching tonight. We appreciate it. Our meeting is now adjourned.